Good evening and welcome to the City of Pasco Council Meeting. The council thanks you for being part of our city government. And at these meetings, the city council takes formal actions on items, holds public hearings, and conducts other business of the city. Agenda packages are available on the City of Pasco's website at www.pasco-gov/agenda. Please note that the city council meetings have been, uh, the city council meetings may be accessed through GoToWebinar. This meeting is also being televised live on Pasco TV Channel 191 on Spectrum Cable in Pasco and Richland, and is streamed on the city's Facebook page, website, and YouTube channel. This and previous council meeting video is available on the city's website. Following the Healthy Washington roadmap to recovery to the COVID-19 crisis, the city council will continue to hold virtual meetings until the Open Public Meetings Act restrictions are lifted. Lastly, the public may submit their comments and/or questions for items not on the agenda by contacting the city manager or the city clerk, or using the feedback form on the city's website. And with that, again, we have our, our, uh, social distancing, our masks, our sanitizers, and, uh, this area has been sanitized and, uh, we're trying to be good stewards and, uh, trying to keep things safe for, for everyone here. And, uh, and hopefully everybody's doing the same wherever they are. So with that, I'd like to, um, have a roll call, please.
Council members Alvarado.
Present.
Maloney.
Present.
Milne.
Present.
Roach.
Present.
Serrano.
Present.
Mayor Protem Barajas.
Present.
And Mayor Martinez.
Thank you, President. Thank you. So shall we all rise for the flag salute, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and liberty and justice for all.
Okay. So next, we have the consent agenda. All items listed under the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by, by a roll call vote as one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If further discussion is desired by council members or the public, it may be removed from the consent agenda to the regular agenda and considered separately. First on the consent agenda is the approval of meeting minutes to approve the minutes of, uh, the Pasco City Council Remote Meeting held on January 19th, 2021, and Remote Workshop held on January 25th, 2021. Bills and Communications to approve claims in a total amount of $3,597,441.75. Uh, next is the ordinance, uh, Amendment Title 20, HPC Staffing, to adopt ordinance number 4516, amending the Pasco Municipal Code Sections 20.10.020, and 2, related to the composition of the Historic Preservation Commission, and further authorize publication by summary only. So that's the consent agenda. If there's, uh, nobody that has any comments or questions about the agenda, Mayor Protem, could I hear a motion, please?
Absolutely, Mayor. I move to approve the consent agenda as read.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Barajas. Uh, so there's been a motion. Do I hear a second?
Councilman Maloney, I'll second that.
Thank you. Uh, the motion passes, however, there's supposed to be a roll call. Or did we just? Yes. I'm sorry. I'm kind of mixed up tonight. So yes, we, we have a motion and it's been seconded. Uh, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Serrano.
Yes.
Alvarado.
Yes.
Maloney.
Yes.
Milne.
Yes.
Roach.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Barajas.
Yes.
And Mayor Martinez.
Yes. Thank you. Passed unanimously. Next, we go to proclamations and acknowledgements. We have a proclamation for February 2021 as, uh, LIGO, Virgo, Gravitational Wave Antenna Month. And tonight, we'd like to, I'd like to read this proclamation. And I know that, uh, before I, I read this, I just, uh, want to talk a little bit, or at least give, um, anyone an opportunity if they have any information on LIGO. I know that Councilwoman Roach, um, is involved and brought this to our attention, and I was really excited when I saw this, Councilwoman Roach. Um, and I, I'll tell you what, why don't I read the proclamation and then if you would like to say some words, that'd be wonderful. So this is a LIGO-VIRGO Gravitational Wave Antenna Month, February 2021. Whereas in 1984, the National Science Foundation approved a development plan for the Large Interferometric Gravitational Wave Observatory, which led to a 1990 construction proposal and the section of Hanford, Washington as one of its two sites in 1992. And whereas on September 14th, 2015, LIGO, LIGO's two sites together achieved the world's first det- uh, detection of gravitational waves, whose existence had been predicted 99 years earlier by Albert Einstein, for which LIGO co-founders Rainier Weiss, Kip Thorne, and Barry Bearish were awarded the 2017 Nobel Prize in Physics for decisive contributions to the LIGO detector and the observation of gravitational waves. And whereas the Institute of Electrical and Electronics Engineers is a professional association with over 423,000 members worldwide, and which has dedicated 212 IEE milestones honoring significant technical and scientific achievements throughout the world. And whereas the IEE's 213th milestone titled Gravitational Wave Antenna, 1972 to 1989, bearing a citation reading in part, "In 2015, LIGO antennas located here and in Louisiana, first detected gravitational waves produced 1.3 billion years ago from two merging black holes, will be dedicated to the LIGO site on February 3rd." And whereas Pasco, Washington recognizes the extraordinary achievements of the LIGO gravitational wave antennas, and now therefore I Saul Martinez, Mayor of the City of Pasco, Washington, on behalf of the entire city council, do hereby proclaim February 2021 as LIGO-VIRGO Gravitational Wave Antenna Month. So with that, I just want to congratulate the, the folks at LIGO and, uh, just want to say how proud I am of, of that, um, operation out there. It's very interesting to see. I've actually been out there. I, I go out there all the time because I work out there, but I've actually been out there, uh, in, in tours and in field trips with, uh, the many students that have visited the area for, for educational purposes, and it's just a fabulous, uh, technology and just, uh, a look into the future of, of how powerful and how things are up in space and the gravitational waves and, and how we could use that for our benefit in, in the future. So with that, um, I'll open it up to anybody who has anything to say about it.
Mayor, this is Councilmember Roach, and I just wanted to let folks know who might be interested in watching the event. It's going to be a streamed online ceremony. Um, it'll have, there will be, uh, Nobel Laureates there, uh, National Science Foundation, and it will be taking place on Wednesday, February 3rd. And so, um, it's a pretty special thing to be, uh, part of and to have in our backyard. And so, um, hopefully we can, uh, put that link on, on our city website or Facebook so that people who want to tune in can.
Wonderful. Thank you, Councilwoman Roach. If there's nobody else, then we will move right along onto, uh, into reports from committees and/or officers. Is there anyone, uh, any council member that would like to report anything throughout, throughout the week that they either attended or have done?
This is Councilmember Maloney.
Yes, Councilmember Maloney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, this morning I had an opportunity to present to the, um, the State House Finance Committee, um, in, in support of a bill that would extend and expand our Main Street program and how, how that's funded. So, um, you know, that's, it's just taking an existing program that helps fund our downtown Pasco Development Authority and supports our downtown region, and seeing if it can, you know, add, add additional, uh, money and benefits to it. So, um, I think it's going to be, I think it's a, it's a solid bill and it's certainly something that I think falls very much in line with what we're, what we're doing here. So, um, it was, it was well received. There was no objections from, um, the committee. Um, so hopefully we'll see that continue to move forward and get, get, get more tool, economic development tools in our toolbox for, especially for our downtown region. Uh, as we, you know, try to finish surviving through COVID and, um, and hopefully have an opportunity to thrive afterwards. So. Anyway, it's pretty, pretty hopeful on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Maloney. Anyone else?
This is Councilmember Roach, and Mayor, if you'll bear with me, I had two different board meetings last week. Um, one was the Community Actions Connection Board, which I, I don't know how familiar the rest of council is with it, but their, their mission is to, um, to provide housing and all the support services for families that are experiencing poverty. Um, so, the, you know, the, in a nutshell, since COVID in 2020, the, the number of families applying, uh, for services has just grown and grown. And the takeaway is that there is a, there is a dire need for low-income housing, um, not just in Pasco, but all over tri-cities, and, and that doesn't mean a shelter or, um, of, of that nature, but low-income housing, like medium to high-density housing for, for families. Um, so that was the one board, and then Visit Tri-Cities, uh, the two things to report back about them. They have a ad campaign, uh, underway right now for radio, TV in English and Spanish for the mass, uh, vaccination deployment. Uh, so that's good, and the exciting piece of news that kind of goes along with, uh, you know, the proclamation you just made is that they've got an app that is, right now in the beta phase, beta phase, um, it's a national parks app. So it's kind of cool that, you know, you could take a virtual tour of the Manhattan Project and the B reactor. And so we'll be, I think, getting to see that sometime this spring, early summer. And that's, those are my two reports.
Wonderful. Thank you, Councilwoman Roach. And I'll, I'll, anybody else? I will also report, um, I think most of you might have watched it, um, but we were, uh, we had the open house, uh, the ribbon cutting ceremony at the fire station on Road 68, and it was well attended, uh, there, and we got to have some tours. I know Councilmember Serrano, um, arrived with his kids and got a little tour himself. Um, it was a, it was a good, good opportunity for us to really highlight what, uh, what the City of Pasco is doing for our citizens and, uh, you know, the staff and the facility, all the engineering, uh, all the, all the details that went into that building was just phenomenal. So we were excited. Uh, the, the, uh, the facility kind of matched, uh, the whole surrounding neighborhood, and it's just really wonderful to see everything, uh, growing and, uh, being developed there in that area. Um, and then we just hope that the, uh, citizens got the message of, you know, the excitement that it's for them and it's for us to, uh, continue on with emergency services for our city, to keep our insurance rates down on our homeowners' insurance, and, and to, um, to follow through on our, uh, our fi- uh, the plan for, for fire and emergency services. So, uh, anyway, it was, uh, well, well-received, I think, and appreciate, um, the city manager's able, uh, to Fire Chief Gear and everyone who was there. And also wanted to thank the engineer who, um, I don't think I even did that during the ribbon cutting ceremony, but the, uh, the engineer, the architect that put it all together, uh, made some wonderful comments about the staff and, uh, how well they worked with them and how, I, I think it was just eight months ago that we were doing the, uh, the groundbreaking ceremony for that. So, uh, everything went well, everything was within budget and/or below, maybe a little bit, and, uh, so, pretty exciting for that. And, um, let's see what, uh, then other than that, just the regular, uh, weekly meetings that we attend for continuity of service. So with that, we'll move right along, uh, to Section 7 Hearings and Council Actions on Ordinances and Resolutions relating there to, none listed. And then we go to ordinances, excuse me, and re- resolutions not relating to hearings. And first, we have, uh, an ordinance, uh, Sawyer's Rezone, Rezone. Director Rick White, are you on the line?
I am, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Um, this proposed rezone is a one and one-half acre rezone. It's a small parcel. It's located on the east side of Road 40 between Ella and Pearl Street, and it would facilitate a three-lot short plat at this location. It comprises about one and a, one and one-half acres, and as you can see from the overhead, um, the existing house and outbuildings, uh, take up a significant portion of the proposed parcel for the rezone. The hearing examiner, Pasco's hearing examiner, conducted a public hearing in January, on the 13th of this, uh, past month, and has forwarded a recommendation of approval for city council's consideration.
Okay. Thank you for that, Mr. White. Anybody from the council have any questions or comments for Mr. White? If not, then, uh, Mayor Protem, would you like to make a motion?
Absolutely, Mayor. I move to adopt ordinance number 4517, rezoning a parcel located at 925 Road 40, um, uh, RS 12 to RS 1, and further authorize publication by summary only.
Thank you. There's, so there's been a motion to adopt ordinance number 4517. Do I hear a second?
This is Councilmember Roach, and I'll second.
Okay, so it's seconded by Councilmember Roach. And again, that's, uh, to adopt ordinance number 4517, rezoning a parcel located at 925 Road 40 from RS 12 to RS 1, and further authorize publication by summary only. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Passed unanimously. Thank you. Next, we have, uh, Resolution for Community Service Contract with Benton Franklin Health District Agreement for COVID-19 Test Site, and I believe that's, uh, Assistant Manager, Adam.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. Uh, the agreement tonight is, uh, an extension of the agreement that you, you had passed, um, last year to help fund the, um, the, the city's involvement with the test site at CBC West. Um, the fiscal impact, as you can see, is about 1.4 million dollars. This, uh, allows us to continue what I think is an extremely successful, uh, testing site at CBC West and, and something that, uh, o- other groups in the state should, should certainly be looking to, to emulate. So that's the brief, brief synopsis if there's any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Lincoln. And, um, if I, well, first I'll open it up. Anybody from the council have any questions or comments for Mr. Lincoln?
This is Councilman Maloney.
Yes, Mr. Maloney.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Lincoln, when I was, as I was reviewing, uh, this item and the next item, um, one thing I wasn't sure I, I understood was how they both matched up. I, I couldn't seem to make the, um, dollar signs, uh, fully, fully line up for the two of them. So could you, could you perhaps, um, help me understand how exactly the extension on this one will match up with the next one? Um, so, so, because they're, they're related, of course, exactly. I, I, I believe.
You're correct, Councilmember. They, they are related. The, um, total amount isn't actually included on the, um, Benton Franklin, uh, agreement. It's probably closer to about 2.5 million dollars, which would exceed the, the, the next item, which is about 1.8 million dollars. The, the costs, uh, that are involved for the, the city's involvement are higher than the, the cost of the, just the contract with, uh, Columbia Safety, which will be the next item.
Got it. So the difference, if I'm understanding what you just said correctly, um, is that, um, we have labor and staff and other items within the city's budget that we are paying for in addition to the, the subcontractor. And so that, that kind of that difference is there, there'll be some amount of that money that we need to spend internally to administer the program.
That's correct. Yes, sir.
Awesome. Thank you. That clears everything up. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Councilmember Maloney. Any other questions or comments? I, I know this was kind of, um, uh, and Mr. Maloney, um, kind of alluded to it a little bit, but this was when we took on this responsibility, this is one of those things like, huh, yes, it finally happened, you know? It, it, I mean, everything went through the way it was supposed to, so really, uh, excited about that and appreciate, um, you know, all the hard work that went into this and, and, you know, coming to fruition and knowing that we're going to get funded for this. So that, that's wonderful. So with that said, Mayor Protem Barajas, would you like to make a motion?
Absolutely, Mayor. I move to approve Resolution Number 4031, approving the community service contract with Benton Franklin Health District for COVID-19 testing site, and further authorize the city manager to execute the contract.
Okay, there's been a motion to approve Resolution Number 4031. Do I hear it second?
Serrano, I'll second that.
Okay, seconded by Councilmember Serrano. So all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Passed unanimously. Right, next, uh, again, uh, Deputy City Manager, Mr. Lincoln, this is for the First Amendment to the Columbia Safety LLC Professional Services Agreement for COVID-19.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, as Councilmember Maloney had alluded to, we are, uh, unable to deliver the services on our own, so we've been reliant on, uh, our, our partners at Columbia Safety LLC to help provide, uh, PPE testing materials and, and personnel to have, help with conducting the testing itself at our, our testing site. So this is an extension of the, um, the, the funding, the amendment to the previous agreement with, uh, Columbia Safety LLC.
Thank you, Mr. Lincoln. So any questions or comments from the council? If not, Mayor Protem Barajas, would you like to make a motion?
Absolutely, Mayor. I move to adopt Resolution Number 4032, approving the First Amendment of the Professional Services Agreement with Columbia Safety LLC for the COVID-19 testing site and further authorize the city manager to execute the contract.
So there's a motion to adopt Resolution Number 4032. Do I hear a second?
This is Alvarado. I'll second.
Okay, seconded by Councilmember Alvarado. And that's to, uh, approve the First Amendment to the Professional Services Agreement with Columbia Safety LLC for the COVID-19 testing site and further authorize the city manager to execute the contract. So all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
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 Opposed, same sign? Passed unanimously. Thank you. Wonderful. Moving right along to number nine, unfinished business. Uh, City Manager's able, do we have anything, or, never mind. So unfinished business, is there anything to report? I don't see nothing listed. And, and now we go to new businesses. We have a bid award for Peanuts Park Construction. Director Radkai, would you like to give us a report on that?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. Good evening, Zach Radkai, ACS Director. Uh, well, the item brought before you this evening is, uh, the, finally, the bid award for the Peanuts Park project. As you know, this has been a longstanding goal for the city council, as well as, uh, the revitalization of downtown Pasco. This project seeks to completely renovate the Peanuts Park and Farmer's Market area, uh, providing new hardscape, new outdoor furniture, uh, new restroom and storage facilities. They're going to, the project will revamp the, uh, existing canopies for the Farmer's Market as well as put up a new third canopy in the center that's going to be a little bit higher to sort of complete the plaza there. Um, there's going to be infrastructure for food trucks, music, and we do have a couple of spots for public art, which will be, uh, uh, looking to be commissioned in the future for that area as well. So really tie, a complete renovation of the park. Um, as you recall, this was originally bid by staff last May. We received one bid at that time. That bid could not be awarded due to some technicalities. Since that time, staff has worked with the design team to further clarify specifications for the project and refine the plan a little bit further, as well as, uh, secure the services of a construction management firm to help staff monitor the construction, ensure the project is done on time, um, also working with various funding agencies on this project to make sure that all of our accounting is in, in order, and as well as work with the downtown businesses on information provision and just, uh, cooperation during the construction of this project. Um, the new bid date was, uh, the, we, we began advertisement in November with a bid opening date of January 12th of this year. The city received one bid from Booth &amp; Sons Construction. The bid was accepted and deemed complete by staff. The bid is $5,852,523.46, which includes Washington State sales tax. The bid, while exceeding the original engineer's estimate, um, while it exceeds the original engineer's estimate, is within the project, total project budget for, um, our work in this area. Pre-construction meetings and mobilization of the contractor will begin over the next couple of weeks. Um, once we're able to sit down and begin a construction start date and look at a new timeline, uh, I'll ensure that information is forwarded on to the city council. Um, so we got a picture there as well as regular updates during the process. Uh, staff's excited to get to work on this project, and I know it's a big project for the community, and, uh, staff is here and ready for any questions or discussion from the council.
Thank you, Director Radkai, and yes, this has been long waiting, and I remember, uh, first having this topic, uh, on this project, and, um, yes, I'm very excited about it. But I'll open it up to council. Anybody have any questions or comments for Director Radkai? If not, then, uh, again, yeah, we're really excited about it. And, uh, this is not new. Uh, this is something that we've been looking forward to for a long time and, and, uh, looking forward to the updates, so we can move right along and then hopefully we've, I, I know the planning has been, uh, we've been planning for a long time, and hopefully we don't miss anything, you know, and, uh, and yeah, we just, we're excited about it. So with that, my director, or, excuse me, Mayor Protem Barajas, would you like to make a motion?
I move to award the bid for the Peanuts Park Remote Construction Project to Booth &amp; Sons Construction Incorporated in the amount of five, oh my gosh, $5,852,523.46, and further authorize the city manager to execute the agreement documents.
Thank you. So there's a motion to approve the award, uh, the bid for the Peanuts Park Remodel Construction Project. Do I hear a second?
Yeah, this is Councilman Milne. I'll second that.
So it's seconded by Councilmember Milne. So all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? It passed unanimously. Thank you. And thank you, council. I know, and thank you for all the people who were involved in the planning and, uh, and the ideas that were brought from the community. It's, uh, wonderful to see this finally, finally get started here. So thank you, Director Radkai. We're looking forward to it. Next, we have miscellaneous discussion. City Manager's able.
Uh, good evening, Mayor and council. Just a few items. Uh, uh, Mayor had mentioned the, the Fire Station 83 virtual ribbon cutting and, uh, the fact that it was on Facebook Live due to COVID gathering restrictions. So the crowd there was actually very limited. Uh, I do want to extend invitation to council. Uh, if you want to make arrangements to get a tour of the facility, it is a rather impressive facility. Uh, state, basically state-of-the-art, a very modern, attractive, uh, uh, facility, uh, for the community and, and for staff to work out of. And then I will note that, uh, once conditions allow, the department, uh, I know will be very happy to, to con- conduct, uh, an open house of some sort for 83 and, and 84. But, uh, and hopefully 84 will, we won't have to make special arrangements. Hopefully, six months from now, when we're doing the same thing for Station 84, uh, we'll be in a better place than we are right now, but we'll, time will tell. Wanted to mention, uh, the Frozen Thunder Run. Uh, I'll take, uh, a little bit of Zach's thunder on that. Uh, Recreation Services put on, uh, Frozen Thunder Run at Big Cross. It was a two-and-a-half-hour run last Saturday. And, uh, I want to give my hats off to the, to the rec staff and, and Zach. Uh, this originally was slated just for teens, and it's gotten pretty popular, uh, for runners of all ages. So they actually wound up holding four races out there with a total of 82, uh, participants, uh, running that track uh, with the help of about 10 volunteers. So we got a lot of great positive feedback from the runners. Uh, and, uh, I think from, from staff, from, from Zach and Brent and others. Uh, it really felt good, uh, to have, to be able to do their job. Basically, to be able to have a recreation event for the community. Uh, in this case, it was a cross-country event, so, you know, people obviously were able to stay separated and, and, uh, you know, it was outside and so forth. But, uh, yeah, it was a good event, and I think staff really felt bolstered, I think, just to be able to, to do what they normally do. And then I, I did also have Chief Gear on the line. Uh, Chief, if you wouldn't mind giving a bit of an update on, uh, where we're at, uh, out at the, uh, vaccination. Where we're at, uh out at the uh vaccination site for this week. I did send a report out to council before the chief gets on, uh that uh came from the test site, uh we're looking at. Four to five hundred tests uh average per day, so we're about at site capacity, as council may recall, we were. Pushing eight, nine hundred for quite a while, and uh so those have dropped off a bit, but we're also open seven days a week, yeah. And then the test site uh was not open today, uh regular uh days are gonna be Tuesday through Saturday. And uh if I could turn it over to the chief, he could talk about the allocation for this week and. And sort of what the plan is going forward, just so council and the publics uh has better awareness of what that's gonna look like, chief?
Well, uh before you get started, Chief Gear, um Mr. Zabel, you said test site, open, you mean the vaccination site?
Vaccin- I'm sorry, vaccination site.
I just wanted to be clear, because I just came by the test site and it's open seven days a week, so.
Test site is, vaccination site is not.
Correct.
Yes.
Alright, thank you, I just wanted clarification, Chief Gear, go ahead.
I I will go back to the test site and it still opens seven days a week, uh tests are running about five hundred people a day. Um we may look at cutting that back, the hours opening. Next week, because we're just not getting a number of people that we used to, um so we'll see what goes on with that, the vaccination site. Um we got thirty nine hundred vaccinations this week, which is a thousand more than last week. Um so we're gonna run about eight fifty a day through there, um we can, we can run a lot more, um. So we'll see, we'll see what the gov- what the governor gives us next week. Um we're bringing in um local medics, start training them, we have health department nurses um only through the next week. And then they're gonna have to be pulled back to their regular jobs, so we're trying to figure out how to supplement the National Guard. Uh vaccinators with local medics and then going from there, we can actually use people down to the EMT level to vaccinate. But we're not ready to get to the EMT level, because it takes a little more time to teach them the um. Putting a needle in the arm, because they don't do that normally where medics do, so we're, we're gonna go, we're gonna hold off a few weeks before we do that. Um other than that, it's going pretty good, um I know there's some people that are upset because we don't get um the. They can't register, that's that's the biggest frustration, and and I don't know, I get calls every day. From organizations that wanna know, how do we help people that are older? And can't uh go through the process, can't work, navigate through it, and there just isn't anything out there we can do with them right now. So that that's very frustrating, but other than that, it it's going along fairly well.
Thank you, Chief Gear. I I did research a little bit, uh I s- I thought I saw a phone number that they could call if it was. Too much of a struggle to get on a computer for some people, uh I thought there was a phone number, one eight hundred number that they could call and I was. I was about ready to just try that out to to see how that would work, uh but um anyway. Uh I I believe it was on the Benton Franklin uh Health District webpage that I saw that, so, Mr. Maloney, were you gonna make a comment?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh thank you to you for the for the report, I just wanted, I just had a quick question on the testing site. I know that that's one of the key metrics for moving into the next phase um of the governor's new, new um new uh. Uh criteria, and so obviously testing is still vitally important for us. Um is this something where I I know we're we're towards the original capacity, but we we've certainly shown that we're we're more more capable than we we had hoped originally. Is this something that you'd recommend that we we do a little more of a media campaign and try to get some more out there? I know the Health District was was primary for that, but I think sometimes people need some reminders, so I just wanna hear your thoughts on. On how we can make sure that we're getting more people tested, obviously vaccinations are key, that's that's, the more we do that, we can get the the better off we all are, but. Um testing is still one of those key elements, so do you have any thoughts on that?
Uh well, I do, um it may not be popular, but I do, the the whole thing with the testing metric is. If you have to have more people test and get more negatives to improve your metric. And if only people that are feeling sick or coming to the test site think they have COVID. And that those are numbers we get, it continues to keep our percentage high, and people need to test and. I don't know what else to to say to them, they they need to test, uh that's that's the, that's the whole met- that's how that whole metric. Of the halls is how many people test and how many people test negative, and if you don't run people through your site, and the only one that comes to the site. Test negative, then our metric stays very high.
So Chief, if I understand that correctly, so what we really need is people who are potentially exposed or otherwise might be in a situation where. Um they're they're concerned about, you know, um potentially. You know, being around someone who's vulnerable, they need to, if they get down and get tested, find out that they're negative, and that helps. Helps contribute to our overall progress towards um phase two, is that, might I understand that correctly?
Exactly, if if you have exposure, go get tested, and even if you don't feel sick, just go get tested and get the exposure numbers down. Or the positives, excuse me, positive numbers down.
Okay, great, well, tha- thanks, Chief, and and um I do hope that if if we can help get the word out a little more, I I know it's uh, you know, everyone's focused on the vaccinations. And that's that's obviously vital, but there's a limited number of of doses coming in for that, um so hopefully we can also get the word out there. Um you know, it'd be great if we could move to phase two, which, uh if we can show that we're really progressing towards. Um you know, a positive rate is 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 declining sufficiently that we can kind of get over that hump and and get to phase two, so. Um so uh Mr. Zabel, I don't know if there's any support we can do as a city for, for helping support that that goal and making sure that word's out there, so. Uh but I would certainly support anything I can do to help, uh I would, I would love to, so, thank you, Chief, and. And and Mr. Zabel, let me know if there's anything I can, you know, personally do or um to help.
Thank you, welcome.
Alright, and I'll also share that there's, there was a big emphasis today uh from all the Hanford contractors and uh Mr. Vance. Uh from DOE uh that uh to re-energize and to uh. To to re-energize yourself and not to let this COVID fatigue take uh take control. And just to keep moving forward until we can get our numbers down, and I appreciate that Councilmember Maloney for bringing up those questions, because I know that's. Uh that's been asked several times, is is it better to get a lot of people in there or no people in there, and. Uh the bottom line is if you're just, if if you feel like you're being exposed, it's get in there, get tested. And hopefully we can get more negatives so that our uh metrics can can uh move in our favors, to open up and uh to come back to some type of normalcy, so. So thank you for that. Alright, so next, if there's nobody, no other com- oh, go ahead, Councilwoman Roach.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I actually, uh Chief Garrett did go to the the testing site this weekend, because my. Daughter had a cold and uh, so we just thought, you know what, best to be safe uh than sorry, so we went. And was really surprised at, there was no line on Saturday day, there were so many av- available appointments on pre-registration. Every seven minutes, basically, were uh were available uh slots and. The last time we went in was October and, you know, in October, the line was totally snaked around, backed into the driveway uh of what used to be. Um New Horizons, and so uh it was a very different, very quick experience this time, and I was wondering about exactly that is that. You know, people just kind of laxed and and I certainly feel that COVID fatigue, but. We were glad to get our our negative tests back in a lot less response time than the first time around. In October, it took about closer to seventy two hours, and this time it was less than nineteen hours to get our uh, you know, our results back, which was. A really quick turnaround, so that was good, um I have one question for you, Chief Garrett, about to follow up. Um which was about the volunteers. And if you knew whether retired doctors, nurses, um maybe those that are close to graduating nursing program. Are they allowed to volunteer at the mass vaccination site?
So, two questions there, actually, uh the test site, uh. We're still doing five to six hundred, which is below, our average used to be around seven to eight hundred, um but they've got it down pretty good. And they can swing people through there and and get the test done and it goes real, real well. On the the volunteers, um we're still, it's kind of interesting, working with the State Department of Health, um. Getting the whole details, like getting a pamphlet, um which is. Um I've asked my deputy incident commander at the the vaccination site to put. Together a pamphlet that we can get out there, or a one pager that we can get out to people to tell them how to volunteer. Because they have to go through a background investigation from Department of Health, um and. We tried working on that last week and we didn't get a lot of um response from DOH, State uh DOH on how to do this. Uh we will have that out this week and we will publicize it on how people sign up on the DOH. Um site to be, have liability protection uh from DOH and be approved to do vaccinations. So I, that will be done. It's on our list of things to get done this week and we will get it done.
Thank you for that, and I look forward to it, and just to say, uh from my own. Uh personal opinion, I think that, you know, in the community, people have. I find that people oftentimes have lots of things to gripe about. Um but I want to just convey to you and to others that the incident management team in Pasco, across tri-cities and the counties that are working at that. Mass deployment site are doing a good job, and I hear, I hear that from people who've gotten their vaccinations there. Um they were, they're happy to get it, they thought it was done very professionally, they, you know. They did not mind, you know, the wait, they know that this is something that is absolutely brand new. Uh that nobody has had to deal with ever before, and so, um you know. You're you're probably hearing from all the people who are complaining, but know that there are people out there who really appreciate the work that's being done, so thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Roach, anyone else? Alright, well, appreciate um going through the agenda that is quick, uh next we go to. A need for executive session, and I believe there is a need for executive. Not tonight, so with that, council, it is four four, uh seven forty two, and uh.
Mayor, may I interrupt you for just one moment and and give one thing for miscellaneous discussion?
Oh yes, go ahead.
Sorry about that, um I have, last week, I um asked our city lobbyists. Uh Brianna Murray if uh we could collaborate on getting a community letter uh drafted in support of. Um the Pasco's uh legislative agenda. Item number one, which is renovations of the MLK Community Center. And so Rihanna provided that and I got it, I think, Friday late afternoon. And so this weekend, um I started working on getting that letter out to people in the community, Pasco residents, organizations. Uh business owners, and so just wanted to share with council that that is out there, and if they would please consider. Putting their own signature on there, but also, you know, circulating that around to the folks that they know, um. As we all know, none, none of our ninth or sixteenth legislators live in Pasco. And so they don't necessarily know firsthand the needs of our community. So it's essentially a situation of the squeaky wheel gets the grease, and so I would appreciate uh all the help I could get with that, thank you.
Perfect, thank you, thank you for that, Councilwoman Roach. Okay, one, one last opportunity. So with that, it is seven forty four and this meeting is now adjourned, thank you.